At the break of dawn and it's on again, better get ready to climb back on the land. Come on, man, shake the dust off the food. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, well, here's your opportunity for turning a page. Today's a new chapter. Write some quiet, make it end with the wind. Give it all you got. First, you gotta rise, look alert and alive, get the dirt from your eyes and work on the prize. Get it done, 'cause we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, don't forget snooze. It's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock, come on. Tick tock, tick, let's go. Tick tock, tick, come on. Tick tock, tick. You can't wait around for someone to prove. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going, don't make it late. So bring me along and lift your arm high like Georgia wheels get a piece of the pie. Begin it with the step, you'll get in it in the sack, get it winning like you never did it when you open slaps, so right this minute, get right with it. What time is it? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting at the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, November nineteenth. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Major Robert Lyle of the Greater Birmingham Area. He's the Greater Birmingham Area Commander for the Salvation Army of Greater Birmingham, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Counselor Valerie Abbott. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning, let us pray. Father, it's not in the elephant or the donkey, but it's in the lamb that I present this prayer. I pray, Lord, that we will continue to be the vessels that you would use to change this wonderful community. Father, we thank you for every man and woman that's in this room, everyone that's holding a post of leadership. We pray for an anointing upon them, Father, because we live in one of the greatest cities. We serve some of the greatest people, and there's one of the greatest needs that is here. So, Father, teach each of us to be good stewards of the time and the positions that you place us. Lord, we pray, from the mayor through the city council, we thank you, Lord, for the law enforcement, the fire department, the medical technology that we have in this great city. Father, we pray for the schools. We pray for the teachers who are underserved quite often and underappreciated. Father, we thank you for those teachers who will go in and take on a classroom where there's not much respect, because, Father, they know that there could be one diamond in the rough that's in that class. So, Father, we thank you for all that we have. We thank you for this great country that we live in. We thank you for the freedoms that we have for every veteran who has served and is even now serving, Father. We thank you for that. We thank you, Lord, that at the end of this day, we will know that you've given us these 24 hours to be the best we can for your glory. So, Father, your psalmist declares that it's better as one day in your courts than a thousand elsewhere. And, Father, we also know that from your word, we find this, that the words of your mouth, our mouth, and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in your sight. Oh, Lord, you are our strength and our redeemer. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Okay. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Protim Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council, the minutes for the September third, 2024, through November twelfth, 2024, meetings are not ready. This time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Mr. President, good morning. Morning to the entire council. Good to see you all on a rainy Tuesday, and I guess the public decided not to come. It's good to see everybody. A few notes, Mr. President and council. One is, we want to share that our Safe Haven program, we're offering our Safe Haven program also during Thanksgiving week, on the City of Birmingham Safe Haven After School Program. We're glad to say that it's partnering with Page Pals during the week of Thanksgiving. The Remain What You Retain Initiative is designed to help our students keep learning even while they are on break for the holidays. Again, the Remain What You Retain Initiative will be the week of Thanksgiving. Some more details is that educational professionals will work with students Monday through Wednesday, November twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, from nine a.m. to one p.m. at the following rec. centers, Central Park, Enslie Rec. Center, Fountain Heights Recreation Center, MLK Rec. Center, Memorial Rec. Center. For more details about this program for families with children, please call two zero five two five four two three nine one. Again, that phone number for those who have interest in this program, for families and/or their children to attend, is two zero five two five four two three nine one. One last note. In partnership with the city council, the City of Birmingham is honored to host again its tree lighting and holiday block party, which is Sunday, December eighth. This is designed very similar to Easter, as well as the Fall Harvest Fest for Halloween for our families. It will take place here again, December eighth, that's a Sunday, on Short Twentieth Street. There'll be food trucks, music, and lighting of the Christmas tree, which is always the best part of the event. It will be from four p.m. to seven p.m., and the tree lighting will be at five thirty p.m. Again, the tree lighting will be at five thirty p.m. Attendees are encouraged to bring their lawn chairs to enjoy the evening, and there will be more details to come weekly, leading up to the eighth, Mr. President and council. That concludes the mayor's report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Mr. Clerk, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
None of this, sir.
Okay. Read our statement on conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clerk, at this time, can we review our consent agenda?
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with item one. Then on page thirteen, we have item two on consent. Page twenty-five, item three is on consent. Page twenty-six, items four, five, and six are on consent. Page twenty-seven, items seven, eight, nine, and ten are on consent. Page twenty-eight, items eleven, twelve, and thirteen are on consent. Page twenty-nine, items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are on consent. Page thirty, items seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are on consent. Page thirty-one, items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are on consent. Page thirty-two, items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are on consent. And we have three addendum items as well. Please note, Mr. President, that item three is on consent, but wanted to add the GL account and also for District Four, a thousand dollars. And the GL account is zero zero one underscore zero 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 underscore zero four two four zero five four two point zero zero one.
Do any members of the council wish to add or remove items to the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. We have two public hearing items. Those are items one and two. Do any members of the public wish to remove items one or two from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Do we have, we're ready for a motion on? Yes, ma'am. Can you come to the lectern, please? Can you, can you come to the lectern, please? Okay, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh huh. My name is Delores L. Brown.
Okay.
Three forty-nine, five acre road, here at town. Three five oh two three.
And you're, the item you're referring to is on page twelve, item number one, page twelve.
Two twenty.
Two twenty. This is for seven-ten New Hill Circle.
That's correct.
Okay, and you're... So, we will remove item... Yeah.
Mr. President.
Mm-hmm.
Forgive me, but we're willing to remove this and have staff engage this young lady to rectify whatever the situation is.
Okay, so administration is withdrawing item two twenty from item number one. All the other items within item number one will remain as is.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'd like to know what the issue is, just...
And would you care to explain?
I'm still working, trying to get here, thing good.
Right, okay. So, it's been withdrawn, so do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I have another, two more items.
Mr. President, before we vote on the consent agenda, I did find a question that I had. So, can I ask that question?
Sure.
Okay, it's about item sixteen on page twenty-nine, and it says that this is for BRT and District Three sidewalk improvements. And we had twelve hundred and fifty-nine pages to read this weekend. I'm sure everybody read all of them. I tried to, and the pages weren't numbered. They were mixed, projects were mixed in with one another, and I never did find out exactly what BRT and District Three sidewalk improvements entail. So, can someone please step up and tell me? Or just take it off. Let's just take off six, let's just take sixteen and seventeen both off, because seventeen says District Five is paying for District Three sidewalk work, and I appreciate it, but I don't believe it.
So, which items? I'm confused on the item number that you're talking about.
Sixteen is on page twenty-nine.
Okay.
And seventeen is on page thirty. And we'll just remove them from consent, and that way someone can get their act together while we're waiting.
Okay. Mr. Clerk.
We have additional items. Administration would like to withdraw items four and five from legal, I'm sorry. Items four and five.
Yeah. They're being withdrawn altogether.
That is correct.
All right. Okay, so items four and five have been withdrawn. Item sixteen and seventeen have been removed from the consent agenda. Item one remains on consent with the exception of item two twenty. So, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Vanderen, Councilmore.
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
All right, consent agenda passes. Mr. Clerk, I believe the first item is item sixteen.
I'm sorry, sixteen?
Yes.
Mr. President, are we, are we allowed to read both?
Sure. Mr. Clerk, could you read them both at the same time?
All right. Item sixteen, a resolution accepting the lump sum bid of Southeastern Seal Coating Incorporated, Birmingham, Alabama, in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents for BRT and District Three sidewalk improvements, this being the lowest responsible and responsive bid submitted and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Southeastern Seal Coating Incorporated and substantively the form contained within the bid documents and in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation. Item seventeen, a resolution accepting the lump sum bid of Southeastern Seal Coating Incorporated, Birmingham, Alabama, in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars for BRT and District Three sidewalk improvements, this being the lowest responsible and responsive bid submitted and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Southeastern Seal Coating Incorporated and substantively the form contained within the bid documents and in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation. Motion, please. Item four.
All right.
Item.
Can I ask more questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, well, if you remember it, then I won't ask it again.
Good morning, Denise Bell Service, Director of Capital Projects. So, sixteen is a combination of the remaining funds for the BRT to actually do some connection and some repairs along some of the BRT routes. Your sidewalk is part of that. So, in order to get it out on the streets, we combined both of those projects so we could get it done.
In the twelve hundred and fifty-nine pages of our agenda, I went through all of them, and I couldn't find a description of what we were doing. I did find out that our sidewalks are four inches thick, which is insufficient according to the Federal Department of Transportation, but I couldn't find any verbiage as to what we were doing or where we were doing it. So, is that something that should have been in our packet so that we would be informed, or is that something that we can obtain after the fact?
We can share. We can share the details. It's the sidewalks that you identified, but we can share the details in our bid documents. It was in our bid documents.
Both, Ms. Abbott, that's an oversight, but we're gonna make sure you get it before today's over.
Okay, well, that would be good, and I was happy to see that District Five was paying for this, but now that I see that this is a, this is, this is the combination project of Districts Two, Five, and Three that we discussed a long time ago?
BRT, yes, some of the BRT routes, yes, and yours, yes, your ARPA funds for your sidewalks, yes.
Okay, this isn't the sidewalk package that we talked about? This isn't the sidewalk package where some of District Two, some of District Five, and some of District Three sidewalks were all being?
No, ma'am.
No, that's separate. That's separate, yeah. This is particularly, so this is particularly along Sixth Avenue South, Tittysfield sidewalks, along Long Avenue, some along Long Avenue, some along Martin Luther, and we just put yours as part of that bid package to get your project, ARPA project, completed as well.
It's a way to expedite your project.
Well, I think that's wonderful. It's just it wasn't clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Exactly what we were doing, but I'm sure that it will be made clear after the meeting.
Yes.
So, I'm, I'm okay now.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
President, could I actually reread what is it, seventeen? The synopsis should be a different synopsis, to be honest with you, as far as the language is concerned.
So, there's a correction in the synopsis?
Okay. A resolution to accept the contract, a lump sum bid of one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars submitted by Southeastern Seal Coating Incorporated, thirteen thirty, adding to Industrial Parkway, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two two four, using American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated for Lewis Park renovations located in Birmingham, Alabama, received by the Director of Capital Projects on Thursday, October the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and it is District Five for that one. That's for seventeen, should be District Five.
So, seventeen is not District Three sidewalk improvement, it's District Five. But I'm gonna take my thank you back to Dr. O'Quinn. I thought he was paying for my sidewalks. It was a long weekend.
Any additional questions on these two items? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Second.
We have a motion on both of them, so we're ready to vote.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that, those two items are approved. That brings us to item thirty-one.
So, item thirty-one, a resolution setting a public hearing January the seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-four dash one, to change zone district boundaries from D-three, single-family districts, to I-one, light-manufacturing district filed by Bree Bothwell, applicant representing the owner, Melody Trim, for property located at twenty-five-ten and twenty-five-thirty Balka Road, situated in Section Three, quarter Section Three Township, seventeen, range one west. This is first reading. Motion, please.
I'm over approval.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved. Item thirty-two, please.
All right, item thirty-two, a resolution setting a public hearing January the seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-four dash eight, to change zone district boundaries from R-three, single-family district, to D-four, medium-density residential district filed by Alicia Walters, applicant representing the only, the owner, Peggy Waters Walters, for property located at one thousand Avenue West, situated in Section Thirty-two, quarter Section Two Township, seventeen, range three west, Birmingham. A motion, please.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
We have two addendum items. Item thirty-three, please.
Actually, we have three addendum items. Item thirty-three is a resolution confirming the appointment of six members to the Board of Directors of the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute as appointed by the board, one term expiring September the first, two thousand and twenty-five, and five terms expiring September the first, two thousand and twenty-seven, and that is under Counselor Clark's permission.
All right, in Counselor Clark's absence, I believe Counselor Smithman's going to review this, the nominations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, we're confirming the appointment of six members to the Board of Directors, one term expiring September first, twenty twenty-five, and five terms expiring September first, twenty twenty-seven. Appointments, Ryan Frott will be replacing Natalie Kelly, expiration date September first, twenty twenty-five, Dr. Melvin Love replacing Ms. Simone, and the rest of them are expiring September first, twenty twenty-seven, Alicia Jones replacing Ms. Rhonda Taylor, Ms. Jones will be replacing Mr. Thomas, Ms. Underwood, she's newly appointed, and then Dr. Willisman will be replacing Mr. Willis. May I move to close?
All right. There's no further discussion, we're ready for motion.
Second.
All right.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, that is, item is approved. Item number thirty-four, please.
Item thirty-four, a resolution, a resolution appointing three members to the Private Education Building Authority of Birmingham Southern College, one term expiring November the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, one term expiring November the tenth, two thousand and twenty-seven, and one term expiring November the eighth, two thousand and twenty-nine.
So, this is item handled by Council Woods, Workforce Development Committee. Council Woods, would you like to review the nominations?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. There are three appointments total. Brandon Cleveland will be appointed to replace Jackie Russell with a term to expire November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Sonia Smith will be appointed to replace Thomas Rice Crosby with a term to expire November tenth, twenty twenty-seven, and Camille Spratling will be appointed to replace Kimberly Patton, term to expire November eighth, twenty twenty-nine.
Question to close the nominations?
Close. Second.
All right. I guess we need a motion on the item.
All right.
All right. Okay, any discussion? None, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. That item is approved, and now we have one communication from the clerk's office.
Item thirty-five, pursuant to provisions of Section Two, dash three, dash twenty-seven, General Code of the City of Birmingham, nineteen eighty, as amended, the Office of the City Attorney hereby gives notice to the City Council of the final judgment rendered in favor of the plaintiff in Edwin Jones versus City of Birmingham, the U.S. District Court, Northern District of Alabama, Southern Division, case number two nineteen C V zero one four two six C L M, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-three, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents, which includes attorney fees and interest copies of which are included herewith, it is in the intent of the City Attorney to satisfy said judgment in full with funds to come from account number zero zero one dash zero two eight dash zero one six zero zero dash five three four dash zero one three.
All right, now we'll move on to new and old business. Attorney King.
Yes, pursuant to Alabama State Code thirty-six twenty-five A seven eight three, is my recommendation that we go into executive session to discuss the ramifications of litigation, as well as legal options regarding potential litigation.
Motion for executive session?
Someone, second.
Okay, who made the motion? I, I didn't see who made it. Oh, Counselor.
Protim Alexander made the motion, and...
Okay. Counselor Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman.
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate.
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counselor President Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor President O'Quinn.
Aye. All right, so we'll go into executive session, we'll reconvene the meeting at the college chair.
All right, Mr. Clerk, we're ready to reconvene. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Smithelman, Councilmember Tate, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Woods, Council President Pro Tem Alexander, Council President O'Quinn.
Present. Okay, so we have come to the announcements portion of our meeting. Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Evergreen Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 5:00 at the Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church. East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 6:00 p.m. and that's on East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 6:00 PM and that's on Zoom. You can call at, well, it's on Zoom. The Smithfield State Neighborhood will be held tonight at 6:00 PM at Daniel Payne Plaza. North Birmingham Meeting will be held on the 19th, which is today, at 5:00 PM at the North Birmingham Library. South Pratt Neighborhood Meeting is canceled and we resumed back January 2025. Hensley Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Hensley Rec Center. Innenridge Neighborhood will be held Thursday, the 21st at 6:00 PM at New Salem Baptist Church. Jewry Hill Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Monday, November 25th at 6:30 at Protector Stadium. Next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 26th at 1:00 PM. Please submit agenda items by Wednesday, November 20th or later than 12 noon to Gregory dot Scannely at BirminghamAL.gov and Patrice dot Collins at BirminghamAL.gov. Tomorrow, we will have the State of the District at 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Crossplex on the second floor. So that's 2340 Crossplex Boulevard. So that's the annual State of the District. Also on Thursday, join us with Brenda Brown-Bussen-Buddy's Community Health Forum. That's Thursday, November 21st, 5:30 to 6:30. That's at One Pratt Park located at 601 Dugan Avenue. So come out and support Ms. Brenda. On Friday, the Gutter Pop-Up Grocery Market. Holiday giveaway will be November 22nd from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's at the 25th Avenue Baptist Church located at 2100 25th Court North. And also Ms. Lois Germany is hosting her annual closet giveaway. So donate your gently used clothes and shoes, men, women, and children, all sizes. Items can be delivered to Sixth Avenue Baptist Church. Found High Rec Center or the church ministry will arrange pickup. You can call Ms. Lois Germany at 205-266-6445 or 205-791-2706. And that concludes my announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Williams.
Thank you. Economic Development Tourism will be meeting at 11:30 today in the council chambers. Brown Springs Neighborhood Conference Call will be Thursday, November 21st at 6:00. Southeast Lake will be meeting Monday, November 25th at 6:00 at East Lake United Methodist. Crestwood South will also be meeting on the 25th at 6:30 at the Jewish Community Center. Also this year, in an effort to reach more families, we've decided to partner with Community Food Bank of Central Alabama for the Thanksgiving holiday, which is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. So if you are or you know a family that could use help over the holidays, specifically Thanksgiving, if you will visit feedingal.org, they will have distribution times and locations in District 2 and also around Birmingham. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next budget finance meeting will be on Monday, November 25th at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. The Five Point South Neighborhood will meet tonight at 6:00 PM in the Fellowship Hall of Holly United Methodist Church. The District 6 Office in partnership with Senator Smitherman and the Community Food Bank of Alabama will be hosting our annual Thanksgiving turkey and food box giveaway on Friday, November 22nd from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at Sixth Avenue Baptist Church. Woodland Park Neighborhood will meet on Monday, November 25th at Woodland Park Church of Christ at 6:00 PM. And then Step by Step Presents Foundation Less Talk, that will be hosted by Coach L, CEO of Step by Step, and Cordell is the youth pastor of Rock City and Gospel Artists. That will be this Sunday at 4:00 PM at 226th Avenue Southwest, 35211 or the 841 building. They'll be talking about mental health and they will have free food, beverages, and information. And I enjoyed being with my colleagues last week in Tampa for the National League of Cities. I want to say congratulations to all of us who were reappointed to our different positions. It was really, really good. It was a really, really good conference, being able to network. I was able to present about the city and our raised fund grant that we get for Smithfield, Graymont, and the Silver Eyes Movement District. So I really enjoyed that and I enjoyed the mayor's office for joining us as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Want to give you a shout out, Counselor Smitherman, for also being recognized as one of NLC's 40 Under 40. That's a huge recognition there, so congratulations. All right, Pro Tem Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are announcements for District 7. Today, the Green Acres Neighborhood Association will meet at 6:00 PM at Living Christ Worship Center. Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup are taking place today in West Goldwire, Tarpli City, Industrial Center, and Garden Highlands. On Wednesday, Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for the Grisella Heights and East Brownsville Neighborhoods. On Thursday, November 21st, the Germania Park Neighborhood Association will meet at 6:00 PM at the South Park Baptist Church and Brush Trash and Brush Pick, Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Roosevelt City. On Friday, November 22nd, we also have Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Germania Park South. On Saturday, November 23rd, the Germania Park Thanksgiving giveaway will be held from 9:00 AM until supplies last. And this is on behalf of the South Park Baptist Church. It will be in their parking lot at 2341 Pearson Avenue Southwest. On Monday, November 25th, the Tarpli City Neighborhood Association will meet at 6:00 PM at the Mary Door Center. And on Saturday, December 14th, the Southwest Holiday Festival will take place at the Hope World Baptist Church. And there is a parade and giveaway that will occur. The parade lineup will start at 1:00 PM. So we really have a great time at this event every year, and so we ask you to please join us for a Day of Joy Holiday Fund for the entire family. I echo Counselor Smitherman's comments about NLC. I wear my NLC button. I couldn't find my 100th Centennial Glasses. I guess they didn't make it home. But this was the celebration of the 100th Centennial Celebration for the National League of Cities. As Counselor Smitherman explained, it is a great opportunity for us to go and network and learn more about opportunities, grants, all types of information that we can bring back to our city. I echo the congratulations for each of the colleagues that received reappointments as well as 40 Under 40. And so we just continue to look forward to the work that we do with National League of Cities. On behalf of the Administration and Government Affairs Committee, I would like to announce that we are taking applications for municipal court judge positions. In order to qualify municipal court judges, in the city must be licensed to practice law in the state and must be a qualified elector of the state. We have two, two years, the term for this position is two years for part-time municipal judges. We actually have positions that are open, part-time places, one through four. The application period starts today, November 19th through December 6th, and that will close at 5:00 PM on December 6th. If you're interested, you should apply by visiting www.birminghamal.gov/boysandagencies. You would select the Municipal Court Judges of the City of Birmingham option, select Apply, and then follow those steps. In addition, applicants can also send their letters of interest or resumes to izola, I-Z-O-L-A, dot hall at BirminghamAL.gov. If you have any additional questions or need any additional information, please call 205-254-2498 or email us at izola.hall@BirminghamAL.gov. Thank you, Mr. President. Those are my announcements.
All right, thank you. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Define my notes. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting was going to be November 27th, but that has been canceled due to lack of a quorum. We have three vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment and two vacancies on the Birmingham Planning Commission. I want to encourage my colleagues to help us find some people for those positions. We don't want them all to come from the same part of town, and so it would be good. But the people have to actually be able to attend the meetings. That's the problem that we have with both of these committees is that people say they want to be on the commissions and then they don't attend the meetings, which is a very big problem. So we have, you know, we have these openings and we've got to fill them. There will be a Southern Area Rezoning Meeting at 5:30 PM tonight at the Highland Golf Club. Then at 6:00 PM, the Highland Park Neighborhood Association will meet in the same room, same location. At 6:00 also, the Five Point South Neighborhood Association will meet at the Highlands United Methodist Church in the social hall on the ground floor. Next Monday, Crestwood South Neighborhood will meet at 6:30 PM at the Levite Jewish Community Center. I want to encourage everyone to continue to call 311 or better yet, download the My Beham 311 app so you can attach photos and describe the situation as you would describe it so that people can find the problem and fix it. And we're asking residents of District 3 to please continue to visit our District 3 website at www.bhamdistrict3.com. And I'm glad everybody became very knowledgeable in Florida last week. I was happy for you and can't wait to hear some of the new ideas that came out of that meeting because that is a great organization and they always have good information for us. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Development Committee meeting will take place today at 2:00 PM in council chambers. The Parking Reg Board will be meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, November 20th at 9:00 AM at the Norwood Community Center located at 1330 28th Street North. Again, it will not take place at Legion Field. It will be in Norwood tomorrow at 9:00 AM at the Norwood Community Center located at 1330 28th Street North. South Woodlawn Neighborhood Association meeting will take place tonight at 6:00 PM at the Birmingham Public Library, the Woodlawn Branch. Pinot Noz Vista Neighborhood Association will be, will take place on Thursday, November 21st at 6:30 PM via Zoom. East Birmingham Neighborhood Association will take place on Monday, November 25th at 6:00 PM at the Shield Center. Kingston will also be Monday, November 25th at 6:00 PM at the Royal Event Center. We do have one Parking Reg Board vacancy. In order to be a Parking Reg Board member, you have to be a resident of Birmingham, registered voter, over 21 years of age, a taxpayer, and real property owner. The term length is four years and there's a two-term limit. So if you are interested in becoming a member of the Birmingham, Birmingham Parking Reg Board, please send your resume to Terry dot Chapman at BirminghamAL.gov. Also, if you are an educator, school leader, or just interested in the state of education in your community, then you should check out the Alabama Opportunity Summit happening this Friday, November 22nd at Red Mount Theater. This free one-day summit will offer many impactful sessions, including professional learning for educators, interactive opportunities to learn about education policy solutions, and resources for advocates and community members to work towards a better education system for all Alabama children. Also want to just give a shout out to Cool Green Trees for the work that they were able to do over in the Collegeville community or Collegeville neighborhood. Got a chance to plant 25 trees on campus at Hudson K-38 School in partnership with New Core Steel, the Alabama Forestry Commission, Youth Serve, Kiwanis Club of Homewood in Mountain Brook, as well as the Collegeville Neighborhood Association and Birmingham City Schools. And so, and also, so Jefferson County Department of Health out there as well. So definitely want to say kudos to them and thank you for the work that you do. And last but not least, I was not appreciative of the whooping that Tuskegee received during homecoming by miles, but I do want to give them a shout out for winning the championship, the CAC championship. So congratulations to y'all. That's all.
All right, thank you. For District 5, we have Central City Neighborhood Association meeting tonight at 6:00 PM at the Birmingham Central Library. Southside Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday night at 6:00 PM at the Birmingham Police Department South Precinct. We will have a Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting next Monday, November 25th at 2:00 PM here in the council chambers. If you have any submissions, please contact Kimberly Phillips at Kimberly dot Phillips at BirminghamAL.gov. The Birmingham Civil Rights Institute will have a anniversary celebration on Wednesday, November 20th. That's this Wednesday, tomorrow night, for the 32nd anniversary. And there will be a celebration honoring the founding member of the Civil Rights Institute, Odessa Wolfook. And that's, you can still purchase tickets online at www.vcri.org backslash event backslash reimagine. The District 5 will have a, our annual food distribution taking place this Friday at 1:00 PM at the Jefferson County Family Court. That is located at 122nd Court North in Smithfield. Food's available while it lasts. Please feel free to call our office at 205-254-2679 if you have any questions. As Mayor mentioned earlier, the city is going to have a holiday block party on Sunday, December 8th at 4:00 PM in front of City Hall with food trucks, music, and family fun, and the tree lighting will take place at 5:30. Did want to offer just a couple of nuggets from NLC. There was, if there were, you know, themes to the conference overall, there's a wide variety of issues that were covered, but there was a lot of discussion about artificial intelligence. There's a lot of municipalities around the country that are utilizing artificial intelligence in various ways, whether it's predictive analytics for law enforcement officers or through their 311 systems. But it's, you know, a new technology, emerging technology, that folks are taking advantage of to realize some efficiencies and improve services for their constituents. Also, another major topic of discussion was ways of addressing the decline in civil discourse and trying to promote civility. There's, you know, we don't see it as much here locally in Birmingham, but across the country, you know, elected officials have, in recent years, been faced with a lot more hostility in public meetings. And it's become, you know, a national concern. So NLC is promoting different ways of addressing that issue and getting folks to, you know, realize that we can disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable. So in any case, you know, when I come back from NLC, I always feel like I need to take a couple of weeks just to read through all of the material that they give us. It's a wealth of information for sure. And then finally, it's raining today, but in a couple of days, it's going to be pretty cold. So you guys pull out the sweaters. I know, you know, might have to go up into the attic. It's been so long since we've had any cold weather, but it's supposed to be below on Wednesday. Our Thursday is down in 34, so yeah, don't get surprised. All right, that's it. All I've got for District 5. I want to thank our officers on duty. I want to thank our officers on duty. We have no public speakers who signed up this morning. Our officers on duty are Cedric Pinkert, uh Officer Williams from West Precinct and um Officer Dunn from West Precinct. Thank you all for being with us.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I just found an email that came yesterday that says the zoning meeting for tonight for the Redmont, the Red Mountain Community is being rescheduled. So they won't be meeting at 5:30, but they're still having their neighborhood meeting at 6:00.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
Sorry about that. I got behind while I was reading the 1,259-page agenda that you came home to after NLC.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, meaning your turn, thank you.
City Summit is always a great opportunity to learn more about the issues that are happening around the country and apply those back locally to the city of Birmingham. So there's no other place where council members and mayors can engage with one another and sort of get uh, for me, oftentimes the view into the future of issues that are coming down the road to- towards Birmingham. So it's, it's a, just a tremendous le- learning opportunity and place where we can see sort of the cutting edge of best practices.
Hi, Wardine Alexander. I'm here at the NLC 2024 City Summit. And I've had the honor of being reelected as the Area 15 Regional Director for NBC Leo of NLC. And this is one of our caucus groups, one of the oldest and the largest caucus groups for NLC. So I'm just excited to be here. I'm glad to represent the city of Birmingham. Gives me a great opportunity to network, not only with local elected officials around the Birmingham and Alabama, but all across the nation.
I was able to make a presentation to the Real Council Meeting. And so I talked about the raise grants that we received last year. So we received almost $22 million for Graymont and Smithfield and be able to connect them to the Civil Rights Movement area and to help the Fourth Avenue North, which is our uh Black Main Street, as we call it. So it was really great to be able to educate people on the different federal grants we have received from the U.S. Department of Transportation in addition to the 14.5 million we got from Secretary Pete as well, from Fourth Avenue, and to talk about the $50 million we got for the Choice uh Award for Smithfield. So it's so great. I'm so honored based off of NLC and our experiences here and the opportunities to connect with our federal representatives and lobbyists to bring back more federal dollars to our city.
I'm very excited because we have such a large delegation of Alabama local elected officials. They are within many of the different caucus groups, contingency groups and federal advocacy groups. And so we're working together to bring all this information back to our area.
So again, it is very important to have a seat at the table with any type of national organization, particularly when you are advocating and making sure that people know that this is the Magic City. So again, very important.
It's, it's really just the value in getting perspective from, you know, your colleagues that are operating all across the country. A- again, there's no other place that I've experienced where I can talk to another council member in, you know, as many states as you care to choose from about issues that are impacting your community. I mean, to me, perspective is one of the most valuable things that we can have. And there's not a better place where you can go to get perspective from someone who's dealing with that issue uh in a completely different setting.
As the mayor said, this site has been the hub of family entertainment in our community for, for decades, for as long as most of us can remember. And to be able to uh, you know, develop a project that's going to bring that back to the site in a major way and provide something unique that we're not providing anywhere else in the city. I mean, it has implications for families all over Birmingham. And that's why it's important for all of us to be here today.
It was over a year ago. We came out here and laid our eyes on this site to cast a vision for what we know, what we knew could be possible for families in our city. But I also want to thank the city councilors. Clinton Woods here, who represents council District One. Crystal Smithman, who is Chairwoman of our Budget and Finance Committee. This could not have happened without her. Represents District Six. JT Moore, City Councilor District Four, was here, but he had to leave. And I saved this young lady for last because she represents this district where the Stabilization Project will be at this time of the day. Carol Clark.
I just want to give, you know, kudos to uh Councilor Clark for the work that she's done to make this possible, as well as the mayor, as well as IEO with uh Mr. Cornell Westling. Um, and just, you know, just all the great things that this is going to bring to the west side of the city. This is a huge deal. This is a huge deal and we're all excited about it.
Our kids deserve to have safe fun. And so I think this is amazing. I wish I had this as a kid, but I think this is great. We have great transportation options. So if kids want to, you know, get together and like, oh, what are we going to do on the Friday night? They have the movie theater, they'll have this. And so I think this is really amazing. I can't wait for this to open up in the next 18 months.
We got to continue to find ways to make sure that residents of Birmingham have all the amenities of surrounding areas. And so we're committed to doing that work and this is just an example. And excited to finally be at this point where we're breaking ground. And I can't wait to get back for the ribbon cutting. And I think I want to play some laser tag.
This project represents the culmination of our collective efforts and dedication to fostering growth and opportunity in our community. It is not just about bricks and mortar, but about igniting a spirit of innovation that will resonate throughout Birmingham for generations to come.
So this is for all of us and we are truly thankful. So uh, Mayor, thank you for keeping your promise to us. And we are looking forward to some casual dining, some weight finding signage and some other things too. Thank you. Bye.
I am so excited to be here to join other local elected officials and especially Congresswoman Sewell for the donation that you've given us today.
And it's always a great day to give 11.7 million dollars away.
To bring us together and connect these trails, she said three words that really mean a lot to me. Collaboration, access, safety, how about money? All right. So again, very grateful to you.
You don't get to work on many projects like this where you can improve a community's safety, a community's health, a community's environment and a community's economy. And I'm very excited to be a part of that.
So when I think about stabilization, what does that look like? When we, I drive around, this, this is church right there, the church up the corner, church down the street. You see churches everywhere. So what is the clergy doing? What, what role are they playing in to stabilize some communities?
I want to tell this to you because I think our churches are in the best position to lead revitalization efforts in your neighborhood.
I like to call you on my own people. And there's no disrespect. No, I'm just saying you are right there in the dirt. You know what's going on. Yeah, people are so, you know, stand up and do something about our issues. Well, it's time to hear. It's time to stand up and do something about our issues.
As Courtney said, we don't want people to leave these neighborhoods. We want to attract people back to Birmingham. Cause we are doing a lot in Birmingham, trust and believe. I know with God and all things, we gonna, we gonna shift what's going on here. This, this, this little spirit got to leave out of Birmingham.
Now for this particular program, we're so grateful to you, Pastor Kate. We're so grateful to you for your $250,000 investment. We're going to go street to street in some neighborhoods like Wild, like Cooper City, like the Civic Code Village, like Dolomite, like Farnines, Oldwood, and do um work on multiple houses on that street. Because the only way we're going to revitalize these communities is we go street by street and we leave neighborhoods.
We feel like this is what's wrong with Birmingham. This is the core of our issues, our environment, the way we live, our, our conditions. So I tell people, I'm not out here to present something, and I'm not here to try to get sick.
My uncle telling me, there's one thing you won't have more of in that life. That's money. So it is valuable. And whether you see developments coming to your neighborhood, whether you see new things coming, don't get discouraged. Be the one in front who starts that process.
The city is required to do something. But it's up to you to take care of yourself.
Cause it's going to take everybody. It's going to take more than the council. It's going to take the state representatives, the county commissioners, the church. Everybody got to play their part. You look at community, break community down, the end of community is unity. So that's, that's the role that we got to play in this is how do we stabilize these communities? And I really believe that we could do this. I really believe we could do this.